To order this meeting of the Westland City Council, it is Monday, June 23, 2025, meeting This meeting to order of the Westland Redevelopment Agency Budget Committee. And is this, let me clarify, Mr. Williams, is this the budget committee of the agency, following the redevelopment agency meeting where we adopted that budget, now we will go into the meeting to adopt the city's budget. or is this the actual redevelopment agency meeting?
This is the redevelopment agency meeting.
So the first item is to approve the agenda for the evening. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
This, this, okay, this is the Westland Redevelopment Agency, the budget committee has already met,
I move to approve the agenda for the June 23, 2025, Westland City Council meeting.
there's a typo on the agenda there, so just to clarify for the record, this is the Westland
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda for the June 23, 2025, Westland Redevelopment Agency meeting for Monday, June 23, 2025, and the first item of business City Council meeting. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we can call the roll for the first of a few times tonight. is any public comment on the redevelopment agency budget. Do we have anybody signed up?
Counselor Bonnington?
There are none.
Okay, and so then with that, we will turn to the public hearing portion of the budget
Yes.
Counselor Bright?
Yes.
Counsel President Baumgartner?
Yes.
Counsel Groner?
Yes.
Mayor Bielostowski?
Yes, thank you, so the agenda is approved, and now, next we have a consent agenda item, committee meeting, and I will open the public hearing and see if there's anybody who's which is the early renewal of the Axon body worn camera contract. Is there any objection to that item, or anything that the council would like to discuss regarding signed up that would like to speak on this item. We already kind of went through that, nobody signed up to speak, but could you clarify that? Because we have to pull it off the consent agenda if we want to talk about it, so, just, for the record?
There are none.
So with that, I will close the public hearing and confirm with Director Breithaupt I always ask that, see, so seeing none, so we will continue then. that I followed the right process to get to the vote. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I think you're great. Yeah, but the only thing that I would say is that we also did have a public hearing
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the consent agenda for the June 23, 2025, Westland City Council meeting,
in front of the budget committee on May 27, and that was the date that the budget committee
which includes the early renewal of the Axon body worn camera contract.
of the Westland Redevelopment Agency approved the budget that you're going to be adopting
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda for the June 23,
tonight.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, and the budget for the redevelopment agency looks good, so it's exciting, and I will now entertain a motion. 2025, Westland City Council meeting, which includes the early renewal of the Axon body worn camera contract.
Do I need to do the agenda, or not?
Do you have a question? There wasn't, okay, the council president has asked if we needed to approve the agenda
No.
Oh, okay, because I was going to have to tell you, no discussion on the consent, no. We'll call the roll, please, and we can. before getting going, because there's a motion to approve the agenda, so.
Counsel Bright?
Yes.
Counsel President Baumgartner?
Yes.
That's our general practice, so I would say go ahead and do that.
Counsel Groner?
Yes.
Counsel Bonnington?
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor Bielostowski?
Consistent with normal practice.
Yes, and the consent agenda is approved, and the contract is approved, and I'm just Okay, the first motion can be to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the agenda for the June 23, 2025, Westland City Council meeting.
like to, on the topic of the body worn camera program, express my gratitude for our police Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda for the June 23, 2025, department, for, in our city, for doing that, and I think it's been a big success for our Westland Redevelopment Agency meeting. Any discussion? community and police department, so glad we're doing that, and glad to see the contract Seeing none, I call the roll, please, thank you. is renewed, I know it's on the consent agenda.
Counselor Bonnington?
Yes.
We got that done, thank you, council, for your support of that as well.
Counselor Bright?
Yes.
Counsel President Baumgartner?
Yes.
Counsel Groner?
Yes.
Mayor Bielostowski?
Yes, thank you, so the agenda is approved, and now we can go back into the public hearing Anything else on that topic of the body worn camera contract? If anybody has any other comments, I can take them now. Okay, seeing none, we can continue on to public comments. portion. We've opened and closed the public hearing on the resolution, there was no public commenters on that matter, and now we can take a, entertain a motion on the resolution to adopt the redevelopment Anybody sign up to speak tonight?
There are none.
Okay, then we have mayor and council reports. agency's budget.
I move to adopt Resolution URA-2025-01, adopting the Westland Redevelopment Agency
Any reports from community advisory groups, looks like, go ahead.
budget for the biennium commencing July 1, 2025, the 2026-2027 biennium, making appropriations,
I attended the planning commission meeting on June 18, and they were reviewing some
levying, add velarum taxes, and classifying the levy pursuant to Section 11B, Article 11
upcoming potential code cleanup items, as well as they received a presentation on the waterfront vision planning.
Awesome, thank you for that update.
of the Oregon Constitution.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded to approve Resolution URA-2025-01, adopting Any other reports from last, since last week? the Westland Redevelopment Agency budget for the biennium commencing July 1, 2025, Counsel president, please.
Thank you, yes, I attended the Transportation Advisory Board meeting, and further discussion
2026-27 biennium, making appropriations, levying, add velarum taxes, and classifying
was had on the pedestrian prioritization plan, and discussion of the traffic safety committee
the levy pursuant to Section 11B, Article 11 of the Oregon Constitution. Any discussion or comments from the redevelopment agency board on this matter?
requests, and the approval of forwarding the prioritization list to council was achieved.
Counselor Bright, please.
I want to say this is our first biennial budget, and I appreciate that you were able
Great, great update, that's exciting to hear, thank you for that.
to align that with the regular, with the city's regular budget, so thank you very much.
I attended the local official advisory committee meeting of DLCD today, that was one of my Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, I will call the roll, please.
Counsel Bright?
Yes.
Counsel President Baumgartner?
Yes.
report, enjoyed attending that meeting.
Counsel Groner?
Yes.
Counsel Bonnington?
Yes.
Counsel Groner, anything to report tonight?
Mayor Bielostowski?
Yes, thank you, so the resolution passes and the budget's adopted, and then I'll
Yeah, I frequently go to the adult center and have lunch there on Wednesday, and there's
just make a comment that I'm hoping in the, in the near future to convene another meeting of the Westland Redevelopment Agency to talk about kind of what the Urban Renewal Agency
some interesting discussions among the parties, they know pretty much that I'm a councilman, I get a lot of questions, try to answer them with the best of my ability.
can do, and what the funds can be used for, and so I've been in communication with the Thank you for being our point of contact at the ACC, we appreciate that, I'm glad city manager about getting our consultant Elaine Howard, who's kind of the expert on you do that. urban renewal, to come to a future work session of the agency to talk about that, just so Counsel Bonnington, anything to report? Okay, so, we will continue on then, I realize I went a little bit out of order there, I we can kind of start planning for the future of the agency and future of the city, and know what the tools we have in our tool belt with this program. apologize, I just got, started reading the motion sheet, and, but we, so we've already So, that's just the last clarification to make, point to make for everybody, so we'll approved the consent agenda, and we can now move to the business meeting, which is a get that scheduled soon. Any other comments in our capacity as the redevelopment agency? big one for the city, this is one of the most important things we do, one of the most We can, okay, seeing none, I will adjourn this portion of the meeting, we'll reconvene important meetings every two years, is that the city council must adopt its budget, which shows the community in a public and transparent way how the taxpayer money is spent, so, Mr. for the city councils' meeting shortly. Thank you. Williams, do you have any introductory comments on the budget, or shall we just move right into the agenda?
Well, we can move right in, have the public hearing, Lauren is going to be taking you through all the items, we're all here, ready to help you do it, but really, the only thing I would say is that this is a major milestone, it's not really the end or the beginning, it's all, budget is just constant, and so it's the middle of the beginning, or something like that, of this budget, but it's been at least half a year under development, with many, many people around the entire city, our volunteer budget committee, and all of you getting us to this point, particularly, of course, Lauren, Caitlin, Misty, many others in the finance department, I just want to appreciate their work on this, and appreciate your work, and the budget committee's work on this. It's a, it's a complicated document, there's a lot of ins and outs to it, and all of you and your volunteers spend a tremendous amount of time reviewing it, going through it in detail, asking great questions, and I think the community should be proud of the work that you do on this. We are looking forward to your decision tonight, and we will wake up tomorrow and do more budgeting, most likely, so that's how it goes, but we are ready for the public hearing, and appreciate your work on this.
Thank you, thank you all for your work on the budget as well, so we have four items on the city council's agenda related to the budget, and each of the items include a resolution for approval, and so we'll have a staff report on each, followed by a public hearing, public testimony, and then we will have a motion to approve each resolution, and so the first item is Resolution 2025-03, the state revenue sharing certification, and I will turn it over to Director Breithaupt for the staff presentation, then open the public hearing.
Thank you. This is our annual declaration required by the state in order to receive state revenue sharing funds. A public hearing was held on May 29, 2025, before the budget committee, as required. A second public hearing is required tonight to discuss the proposed uses of the funds. The city is estimating to receive about $320,000 for fiscal year '26, and also $320,000 for fiscal year '27, and it has been budgeted for use within the general fund on general operations.
Thank you for that report, and then I will now open the public hearing and take testimony concerning the state revenue sharing and projected uses that you've heard tonight. So the public hearing is open, has anybody signed up to speak on this item?
There are none.
Okay, so the record can reflect that there was no public comments during the public hearing, so I will close the public hearing on Resolution 2025-03, and anybody like to make a motion, and then we can have discussion?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution 2025-03, declaring the city of Westland's election to receive state revenue sharing funds, general funds of the state, in the 2026-2027 biennium.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 2025-03, declaring the city of Westland's election to receive state revenue sharing funds in the 2026-2027 biennium. Any discussion from the council? Okay, I see no discussion, so we can call the roll on 2025-03.
Counsel President Baumgartner?
Yes.
Counsel Groner?
Yes.
Counsel Bonnington?
Yes.
Counsel Bright?
Yes.
Mayor Bielostowski?
Yes, so the motion passes unanimously, and the resolution is adopted, thank you, everybody, on to agenda item, second item of the business meeting, Agenda 6A2, which is Resolution 2025-04, the election to receive state shared revenue funds. So, we can now have a staff report on this item, and so, it's interesting, we have, the first one was state revenue sharing certification, and now this one is another.
Yeah, I don't think they could have made it any more confusing, and I always have to look to see which one is which, but this resolution is necessary to can, to continue the receipt of state shared revenues, which is collected on cigarette, liquor, 911, and highway gas tax. The city is eligible to receive these funds because we have certain required services that we provide, those services are police protection, street construction and maintenance and lighting, sanitary sewer, storm sewer, planning, zoning, and subdivision control, and water utility service. The city utilizes these revenues to support the general fund and the streets funds, and the funds are distributed based on population within eligible cities.
Thank you.
And what is the projected amount?
They're all different for the different items, so I don't have a total there, right off the tip of my tongue, but, some of them are very small, like the liquor and cigarette taxes are, you know, 10,000 or 15,000 a year, or something like that, but some of them are quite high, like the gas tax, which is its own line item in the budget.
So this is, it's a great question, and so when you talk about the gas taxes, and this is kind of the item when we're talking in the legislature about the 50-30-20 split that the state gives, 50% to the state, 30% to the county, 20% to the cities, this is the line item, or the topic of the city's share of that revenue, basically, is that correct?
Yes.
Oh, very.
Believe so.
Good to know, good for education purposes, this has been in the news a lot lately with the transportation package.
And the number on that gas tax that we project is about 2.2 million a year, so, just so you know, that's the, the gas tax portion of it, so it's pretty significant.
And interestingly, it goes up a little bit from the last, in a small amount, but it goes up, so not declining quite yet, although it could start declining with EV.
That is based, the, these numbers are based off of the League of Oregon Cities projections that they put out every year, so it could change, but that's what they're projecting, and they project on a per capita basis, so however much you get is on per capita.
Thank you for that, and, let's do the public hearing, so I will open up the public hearing on 2025-04, the resolution, any, would anybody like to speak on this item, or is anybody signed up?
There are none.
So the record can reflect that there are no public commenters on this item either, but we did hold the public hearing, so I will close it, and have a motion to approve Resolution 2025-04, any comments?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution 2025-04, certifying the city of Westland is eligible in the 2026-2027 biennium to receive state shared revenues, cigarettes, liquor, 911, and highway gas taxes because it provides four or more municipal services.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 2025-04, certifying the city of Westland is eligible in the 2026-27 biennium to receive state shared revenues, cigarette, liquor, 911, highway gas taxes because it provides four or more municipal Any discussion on this item from the council? Seeing no, no discussion, so, oh, Counsel Groner, please.
So, I guess there has been discussion about us collecting some money for marijuana taxes, but I gather that's not in our current.
Yeah, so we currently have a prohibition, or prohibition against it in our code, so we would have to change that before we could start, and there is a portion of that that is collected, like these other revenues, that's on a per capita basis, and then there's also a portion of it that would be calculated on, if you have dispensaries in the cities. So even if we didn't have a dispensary in the city, we would still collect a certain portion just for allowing it.
And we currently do not allow it.
We currently do not allow it, no.
Thank you for that, good question, any other comments on, on this? Just, I feel, it's good to see the actual, like, put a visualization to the gas tax number that we get from the state, as we've been talking a lot about 50-30-20 split, and we've been pushing in our testimony, I testified, sent in some written testimony about the transportation package last week, and one of the things I said was maintain that 50-30-20 split, and this is what we're talking about, it's a serious amount of money, I mean 2.2 million, it's our main road fund, so, I'm glad to see that, at least what I've seen in Salem, is that the packages do not eliminate that formula or modify it, so we'll be able to retain at least our existing funding, or get an increase. Anything else, on the, on, anything else on the 20- Anything else on the, anything else on 2025-04? Seeing none, we can call the roll. Thank you for the comments. Oh, you didn't make the motion yet? Oh, okay, please. I think we had, wait a minute, I think we had a motion and a second on this.
Oh, we did? Okay, sorry. Oh, that's right. And then we had discussion.
Yeah.
My mistake.
Wait a minute. Yeah, we, so we were just in discussion. So any other discussion from the council on this? Okay, call the roll, please.
Council Bonnington?
Yes.
Council Bright?
Yes.
Council President Baumgartner?
Yes.
Council Groener?
Yes.
Mayor Bielosowski?
Yes. So the motion passes and we are eligible, remain so.
Wonderful.
For those funds. So thank you, everybody. Two down and a couple to go, few votes to go tonight.
Few more.
The next item is Resolution 2025-05, Agenda Item 6A3. And that is approving the master fee schedule. And we will have a staff report on that item.
Great, thank you. This is the annual update to our master fees and charges. This is effective on July 1, 2025. And as discussed during the budget committee meetings, this is what we have used to balance our budgets. And we have a few changes throughout the document. But most significantly, our system development charges, our SDC fees, are increasing 2.78%, which is following the engineering news record CCI for the 20-year city average index. Our utility billing fees, which are water, sewer, surface, water, streets, and parks, are increasing by 5%. And that's what we used to balance the first year of the budget, of the 2026-27 budget. Our administrative fees, our business licenses and sidewalk cafes are increasing approximately 5%. We have some minor increases in our GIS area and mapping fees, minor changes in library to make it more consistent with other libraries. Our parks rental fees have increased about $5 per rental. And then there's some miscellaneous fee changes to clean up the document. Police had no changes. Public Works had a little, a few changes to update, to reflect inflation. Same thing with building. Our solid waste, we have two providers in there, Westland Refuse and Recycling and Keller Dropbox, which does business as Allied Waste Services and Republic Services. And both of these provide us the rates, and they are just on our schedule, but we do not bill for these. So they're on the schedule. And yeah, this is quite a bit of additional revenue with these increases each year. And as we know, according to our charter, we can only increase it, increase the rate 5% for certain fees for the water, sewer, and storm drain. So we have consistently been increasing it as advised by the utility advisory board.
Thank you for that. Council Groener, please.
Yeah, these rates, are these biennial rates or are they going to be revised in a year?
So we revise these actually every year. And sometimes we do a mid-year update, depending on if there's a fee that we need to revise. We might have to do that this year with the right-of-way code changes, since that's been moved back to a later meeting. So we might have to do another small revision to that section only. But yeah, we do this every, every June.
Thank you.
Question on the 5% cap, which I think comes up every, every time we do a budget. But is, is the, is our cost exceeding that? Like the, are our costs, are we able to maintain the system with being capped at 5%? Because inflation's gone way up lately, so it's concerning.
No, you know, inflation has gone up way more than 5% in the last few years. And so some years, we are, you know, taking a pretty big hit. And it depends on what our rates are from South Fork Water Board, on how much, if they go up more than 5%, then obviously our portion is less than that increase. So we're actually getting less if their rate goes up more than 5%. Historically, it hasn't. But in the future, they are talking about having some significant rate changes. And so if that does happen, then we would be losing money in that area, too.
We're, yeah, we're, thank you for that. We're going to have to talk about that because we did raise the rates at South Fork to do some capital projects for the distribution system. Can't remember when they go into effect, but it's in the coming, in the coming year. And so we'll have to have council discussion at some point about this, that issue. Because obviously, we can't, if we're capped at 5% as a city and South Fork raises their rates, and we have to absorb that as the purchaser of the water, then we have to figure that out. So, well, I'm guessing that'll be an agenda topic. And thank you for raising that, because that's a good point to flag for the council. Any other comments on the master fee schedule, the rates, utility advisory board, utility rates? Council Bright, please.
I will say that the utility advisory board feels a little bit like, what do we do? You know, because we have the limit, so they're really limited to that cap. And it doesn't allow them to really look at all of the work that needs to be done and help just determine the rates increases that should be happening.
I agree with that.
Thank you, counselor. Anything else? I guess let's have a motion on the master fee schedule, Resolution 2025-06. Is there a hearing for this item, the fee schedule?
I don't believe there's a public hearing on this.
There's one required, but has anybody signed up to speak on the master fee schedule?
No, they have not.
Okay, thank you. So with that, we can take a motion?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution 2025-05 revising fees and charges as shown in Attachment A and updating the master fees and charges document of the city of Westland.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 2025-05 revising fees and charges as shown in Attachment A to the resolution, updating the master fees and charges document of the city of Westland. Any comments or discussion? I know that the cost of living is high in the community, but it's also hard to provide services. So I think these increases are justified from the standpoint of keeping up with inflation and doing what we have to do from, to keep providing the city services that we do. So any other comments?
I'll make a comment.
Please, Council President.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just comment that I do hear generally on the topic of housing affordability, when our development costs are higher, it makes it harder for developers to build affordable housing. And so it's just a circle that goes round and round. So I'm hoping that we can put our heads together and find ways to diversify and bring revenues into the city so that we can someday maybe affect a change that helps with things like affordable housing and, of course, our own community members as well. Because it's difficult to run a city with high expectations with a very lean budget that we have. So we're doing our best.
Yes.
And thank you for all of the work you've done on all of this.
Great comments. Council President agreed. And hopefully, the urban renewal agency discussion that we have in the future will help explore at least one of the tools we have. Counselor Bonnington, please.
I think it's worth noting that I don't believe any of us relish raising fees and raising rates, but things do cost what they cost. And it's kind of unavoidable that we're going to have to pass that cost on. It's not like when Comcast, for instance, raises their rates, or AT&amp;T, there's not a profit margin involved. It really is what it costs and what we need to make it happen. So it's unfortunate, but it's reality.
Thank you for that. Any other comments? Okay, it's been a motion and a second, so we can call the roll on 2025-05.
Council Bright?
Yes.
Council President Baumgartner?
Yes.
Council Groener?
Yes.
Council Bonnington?
Yes.
Mayor Bielosowski?
Yes. So the motion passes and the Resolution 2025 is, 05 is adopted unanimously. And now we will move on to the big-ticket item, the budget itself. This is item 6A4, Resolution 2025-06, adopting the city of Westland's budget and capital improvement plan for the biennium commenced in July 1, 2025, making appropriations, levying ad valorem taxes, and classifying the levy pursuant to Section 11B, Article 11 of the Oregon Constitution. So we will have a staff report.
Great, thank you. So this is the big one. This resolution requests the adoption of the city of Westland biennial budget and the capital improvement plan for the 2026-27 biennium. It makes appropriations, levies, the tax rate, and the bonded debt rates. So we had, the budget committee met on May 27 and May 29 to receive and discuss and consider approval for this biennium budget and had a public hearing at the May 27 meeting. And the changes made to the proposed budget were approved by the budget committee as follows. We had a change in the general fund non-departmental for the Westland Chamber of Commerce, added new appropriation of $35,000 in both fiscal year '26 and fiscal year '27, so $70,000 total. In the general fund non-departmental, we added, we increased appropriations $30,000 in fiscal year '26 and $30,000 in fiscal year '27 for the Main Street grants. In the general fund for contingency, we decreased it by $60,000 for the biennium to offset the increase to the Main Street grants. And then we offset the increase for the Westland Chamber of Commerce by the following decreases. So we decreased the city manager department budget materials and services by $5,000 each year, so $10,000 total. We decreased the planning department materials and services by $10,000 each year, $20,000 total for the biennium. We decreased the information technology department materials and services by 15 each year, $30,000 total for the biennium. And we decreased the human resources department materials and services by $5,000 each year, $10,000 total for the biennium. Staff respectfully request that the adoption of this budget of $194,078,000 with set appropriations, along with levy of property tax rate for the 2026-27 biennium, the permanent tax rate of $2.12 per thousand for each fiscal year of the biennium, and the bonded debt levy is $1,851,000 for fiscal year '25 and '26, and $1,862,000 for fiscal year '26-27.
Thank you for that staff report. And this is an item where we have to have a public hearing, I believe, correct?
Yes.
So I will just open the, open the public hearing and take testimony on the proposed budget and Resolution 2025-06. The public hearing is open. Has anybody signed up to testify on the budget document?
There is no one.
Nobody has signed up to testify on the city's budget. Well, that's, it's the most important thing that we do. But seeing that, we will close the public hearing. And now we can move into council discussion. Now, Counselor Bonnington, I think, had a comment to make that he talked about a little earlier regarding the, some of the cuts that were made. But maybe before you make that comment, city manager and finance director, I'm going to put you on the spot, but at the budget committee meeting, we did, as kind of a compromise proposal, vote on the issue of taking some money from contingency to fund Main Street and the Chamber of Commerce, and then taking some money out of some of the city departments as a compromise. And maybe you could just start off by, if you can, tell us what exactly we cut, like from the standpoint of, you know, we, we cut $5,000 from city management department, some money from planning, and $30,000 from IT. And I just want us to kind of try to understand what we were at, what services we were cutting by doing that, if you can provide some overview or examples.
Yeah, you want me to field it? You know, there's, I would say that it's probably just across the board. It's not necessarily like we're saying, oh, we're cutting training $5,000 because these budgets are very small to begin with for items like that. And so it's more that we are just, in some departments, we're cutting professional and technical services, like the planning department. That's where we're planning on cutting it from. And same thing with the city manager's department. IT would probably just be from software subscriptions. And that area was the one area that had like a little bit of a buffer in it just because of the timing of renewals. So we're hoping that that will come in under there. And then human resources department, materials and services. So again, professional and technical services, hoping that we come in under for negotiations and things like that.
Yeah, I think it's just, it's a little bit hard to define, but it's probably delaying some things and making some things just a little bit smaller. So in the planning department, for example, we may look to make some of the contracts that have to do with implementation of Highway 43 or the waterfront, for example, just a little bit smaller, a little bit more focused. I think in, in the city manager budget, it's just going to be, you know, winnowing here and there on some of the training possibilities, some of the, some of the purchases. Hopefully, we'll be able to just make it all work out. I think the balance between contingency and materials and services is a reasonable compromise in this case. And I think the council's discussion was, was pretty good about the, you know, both the, the challenges of doing this exact thing, but also the relatively small scale of this relative to some of the bigger things facing us over the next five years. I think we need to stay focused on the, on the bigger picture mostly as we, as we move forward.
Appreciate that. Counselor Bonnington, I'll go to you for the floor.
So as I, as I brought up back then at that meeting, I still remain kind of concerned about making those cuts as opposed to taking that from contingency entirely. And if those happen to come in under, then that's, that's great. But taking resources away from departments that are already superstrained just isn't, isn't my preference here. So that's a change I would really prefer.
Thank you for that. And we can have discussion on that. Counselor Groener, please, any comments?
Yeah. Ms. Breithaupt, I want to express my concern about the process by which these community grants are given. My understanding, these come out of the budget committee, they're voted on by the budget committee. And basically, these come out of debates and discussions in the budget committee. But I would really love to see a more rational process for determining these grants. I mean, for example, categorizing them in terms of things like health and welfare grants, which I think the Food Branchery covers under, discovers. The arts, youth, these are categories, and are we balancing these categories? Dollars per population served, alternative sources that these groups could be getting money from. Basically, have some sort of point scoring system for these proposed grants. And it's still going to be somewhat subjective, but somewhat more rational, I think, approach.
Are you, are you talking about the community grants?
Yes, I am.
Oh, okay. That, this one is just for the budget line item. So there is a line item in the budget for community grants of the total dollar value. And then there's also the line items for the Main Street grant and the Chamber of Commerce grant. But the actual community grants is another agenda item a little bit later on.
I'm pretty sure, I apologize.
No worries, no worries.
So Will, your comment has been noted. And when we get to the agenda item in a couple, in a few minutes, we'll revisit that. You raised an interesting point there. Now, any other comments on the budget? Counselor Bonnington has brought up the issue of the cuts that came out of the budget committee. And we can discuss those and, and see if the council is comfortable with it. And I'm glad to have the city manager's clarification there, because I don't want to, wanted to make sure we understand exactly what we're cutting. You know, we cut from IT, I don't want to cut from cybersecurity, as an example, you know it. And then it comes out to, it turns out that we've cut some sort of important function. So thank you for as much clarification as you can provide. Counselor Bright, please.
I just want to say, you know, in the budget committee meeting, we did talk about compromising and have some come from contingency and some come from other departments. And, you know, budgets are not really cast in concrete. They're a little more like in sand. And so it's possible that some of the cuts to the departments won't even be noticed, depending upon what happens. As, as you said, with, you know, negotiations, maybe they'll take less time, less legal costs. There's, there's a lot of things that can happen. Also knowing that if things don't happen favorably to that, you have the opportunity to bring to us a supplemental budget if we need it. to bring to us a supplemental budget if we need it, that we can then move money from maybe some other area that is spending at a much lower level, or taking it from contingency at that time.
Exactly, thank you for that.
Any other, any other comments? I guess, just one on the Planning Department. We're talking about a small dollar amount, obviously, but when we talk about implementation of the council priorities, you know, is that a, are we, are we seriously hampering the implementation of the waterfront or Vision 43 by approving that, you know, reducing the budget by $15,000?
I don't expect we're seriously hampering it. We'll, we'll figure out a way to make it work. We have, for example, we have a vacancy in the department, and that we will have a little bit of a buffer in the beginning of the year before that person comes on board, so that'll make a dent into that right away.
And I, so I guess if we go throughout the coming biennium and things come up where something's important to be funded and we approve this, and we need to take an action to find funds elsewhere for an important council priority like implementation of those projects, we could do that.
Yep, for sure.
Exactly.
Okay, well, any, any follow-up comments from anybody? Councilor Bonnington?
I guess I still have concerns just about the IT portion, because they, they support all the departments. So, that kind of hits them harder than anything else. And we could spend all sorts of money on IT and still not be quite where, where it would need to be, because that's such an expensive field. But if we can take care of it later, if something comes up, that can be okay.
So, with IT, it's one of our harder departments to budget for, because the subscriptions aren't necessarily always a one-year subscription. So, it's not like you're renewing it every year, and you know exactly when the subscriptions are going to be come and due. Sometimes you end up with a package where if you pay for three years, you get a significant cut versus paying for two years, and so we might end up doing that. So, it is a, a challenge to budget that. And with that, I do buffer a little bit more in that department than I do in other departments. And like Councilor Bright said, I think what we'll end up doing is what we do with every department, is I watch it as the biennium goes on. And if we're tracking too high in that department, we'll come back to you with a supplemental budget. We're not going to do away with cybersecurity or anything like that. And you never know what is going to happen in a lot of these departments, there might be something that comes up that we can't plan for, and that's what a supplemental budget is for. So, having it in contingency means that we could potentially use it out of a supplemental, for a supplemental budget to pull it out. But keeping it out of the budget makes it so that we're not expecting to spend that or going up to that amount. So, it just causes us to be a little bit more careful, I think, with that reduction. But I think that we can definitely, we can, it won't be a huge problem, and if it is, we will make that adjustment.
I'd like to add on to that as well. We, we had several discussions in the course of the budget process about the problems in future years. We're going to be watching, tomorrow morning, at Department Head meeting, we're going to have a conversation about this adopted budget and the fact that we need to be watching every single thing. We always do, and the Department Heads do a great job of it, we always return money into the budget at the end of the period. But we're going to have to do that even more so this time around, given the concerns we have about multiple years out. So, we are going to be watching every single piece of this over the next two years to ensure that we minimize that cliff that we have ahead of us. And we all take it really, really seriously. You know, I was traveling in Oregon this weekend, I picked up some local newspapers, almost every city was budget cut this or that, or service not being made, or fees increasing, or all of it. Everyone across the state is struggling with this right now. I think we've been quite lucky to be able to put together this budget as it is without cuts, without significant cuts, because many of our peer cities are not doing that. But we know that that can only rely, that can only continue to exist if we're managing the budgets really, really well. So, we certainly will make sure that our cybersecurity is taken care of, that our, that our, all of our electronic services are taken care of to the best of our ability. I suspect due to some of the variability in that budget, that we're probably actually going to be okay. I very much appreciate the comments and the concern, because the budget we brought you was not overloaded in any way, as, since not everyone who might watch this meeting knows some of the things that we talked about in the Budget Committee meetings. That budget process starts with departments working within themselves to put together proposals for what they're going to need. Then, they have to sit down with me and Lauren and with Alyssa to justify every single line item. And we had a lot of questions about, so what is this, and why would this be more, why would this be less? And then, the Budget Committee had the similar questions and was able to talk to Department Heads. So, you know that the line items aren't overloaded in any way. So, I do appreciate the concern. I, I support it in an ideal world. We will make this small. If you had had 20 of these, I would be raising my hand and saying, we have a real significant problem. I think with a small scale of what you've done, or what you're proposing to do, or what the Budget Committee recommended approval of, I think we can be okay. And we will certainly come back to you if we have concerns. Those are my, those are my thoughts for right now. Also, I don't think Lauren wants to rework the numbers this evening, is that true, Lauren? Without a break?
I would prefer not to, but...
Before adoption.
Yes. That would be ideal.
Okay, well, I appreciate everybody's comments, and I've heard from the council, and I think that it's okay to move forward with the trust in the city staff, that if something comes up from one of these reductions, then we'll revisit the, the topic, and not, no essential services are being cut. Thank you for the clarification. I just wanted to make sure everybody had a good, good idea of what they were approving, because it was, got a little more certainty tonight from the Budget Committee process. So, any other comments before we adopt, or? So, okay, I would entertain a motion on 2025-07. Oh, excuse me, 2025-06. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution 2025-06, adopting the City of Westland Budget and Capital Improvement Plan for the biennium commencing July 1st, 2025, the 2026-27 biennium, making appropriations, levying ad valorem taxes, and classifying the levy pursuant to Section 11B, Article 11 of the Oregon Constitution.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 2025-06, adopting the City of Westland Budget Capital Improvement Plan for the biennium commencing July 1st, 2025, making appropriations, levying ad valorem taxes, and classifying the levy pursuant to Section 11B, Article 11 of the Oregon Constitution. Any discussion? Seeing none, you can call the roll, please.
Council President Baumgartner?
Yes.
Councilor Groner?
Yes.
Councilor Bonnington?
Yes.
Councilor Bright?
Yes.
Mayor Bielostowski?
Yes, thank you. The motion passes and the budget is adopted unanimously.
Thank you. And we did do a public hearing on that, right? Okay, I just wanted to make sure I did.
Before we got into discussion, we did the public hearing. Thank you for flagging.
Losing track of all the public hearings, I just wanted to make sure, thank you.
And you know, the, the forecast out, just one final comment on this budget issue, and we can, but the forecast, the forecast for the out-years doesn't look too good. I know there's a substantial deficit in there. I can't, do, do you know the number off the top of your head?
It was about $9 million.
For, and that's for?
The general fund, yeah.
And what year would that take effect, if that was?
So, that would be fiscal year '29, I believe.
So, that's a cut, two budgets from now.
Well, yeah, so it's, so it would be the next budget cycle that we're talking about. So, two years from now, we'll be talking about that budget, we'll be adopting that budget. So, we'll need to have something figured out in two years.
So, you know, and usually it swings back where it's, that you project a deficit and it's not that, doesn't end up happening. But it's, it's never been this big of a deficit from the city's standpoint when you're projecting it. And I've, since I got involved in city politics in high school, I remember talking of deficits being projected, and then it always worked out. But this one is quite substantial, and so I think it's incumbent upon us as the city council, working with staff and the public and the community, to, to have proactive meetings and planning sessions about how we can address this structural budget issue, so that in two years, we're not projecting, presiding over a cut budget of essential city services. I mean, if we have to, even if we have to cut $5 million, we're a lean city. So, let's come together as a city council and staff and community and talk about these, this issue, because we're, we don't have a, you know, a lot of staff to be able, you know, we don't have a lot of place where we can make cuts. I mean, so, I know we've talked about it in the past at city council, and Councilor Bonnington's been a big advocate of, of having these conversations, we all have, and so we will do that. And I just wanted to make that note and open the floor, if anybody has any comments on, on that issue, because that is concerning and important to talk about. And the conversation starts now, sorry, we just adopted the good budget, but, Councilor Bright, please.
I just wanted to say thank you for all of your hard work, for all of the city staff. I know everybody has their hands in it at least a little bit. And I really appreciate the fact that you do show those out-years, so that we can kind of see what's coming at us, and we can take what actions we need to prepare for that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other discussions or comments, or? Council President, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and I would echo the thanks for staff, all the, especially the flexibility with kind of being creative about suggesting solutions and keeping our minds open. So, I appreciate that, and I actually look forward to having these conversations. I think sometimes we can become not complacent, and I don't mean staff, but I just mean the community in general, like, oh, everything's fine. So, these are conversations that I think is a good opportunity to have for planning and community development. So, I think it's, it's going to be great that we can have conversations about what, what do we need, and how do we get there? So, thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate that, and I appreciated the Budget Committee and the entire process that we had, and getting to hear from all the different departments about what they're doing and where the money's going was a good transparent public process, and I, it was a good experience, so thank you. Any final comments on the biennial budget that we just adopted, or more to come on the planning for the future? I see none, so thank you, council. We'll continue on, we've got a couple more resolutions. It might be a record for the most resolutions in a, in a meeting. We've got now the supplemental budget, which is Resolution 2025-07. And I'll turn it over to Director Breitkopf for a staff report on supplemental.
Great. First, I would like to note in the resolution, there is a Scribner's error in the first part of it. The resolution adjusting the budget for, it should say the 2024-2025 biennium, and it says 2022-23, so that's a correction that we're going to make, thank you. So, this is the process that we were just discussing, that when we budget, we budget two years before some items, and we don't necessarily know what's going to happen in those two years. And sometimes things come up that are more expensive, or hopefully, we have savings in areas. And we have both of that in this biennium. So, we do have a few adjustments that we need to make to the budget in order to stay within our budget guidelines. And we've done that by increasing some areas and reducing some other departments that had a reduction in cost, and also reducing contingency a little bit. So, the areas that we are increasing are, we are increasing the council, City Council Department, and this is, we're increasing it about $100,000, and that's due to the stipend vote. The citizens voted for a stipend increase, and that was not projected originally in the budget, so we are increasing that area, and some minor other expenditures that we just need to add into there. We expect to incur approximately $161,000 of additional costs in the City Facilities Department, and this is due to an increased cost of utilities, repairs, and maintenance. So, that's another increase that we have here. In non-departmental debt service, we've talked about this quite a few times, but there is a new GASB that came out a couple of years ago, GASB 96, which refers to subscription-based IT agreements, and it changes how we account for subscription-based agreements. It makes things very challenging for the budget, but originally, we had budgeted our subscriptions in the IT department, and some of them still stay, remain in the IT department, but some of them are being paid for through debt service now. So, we are increasing the debt service in the non-departmental by $611,000. And then the last item of increase is non-departmental materials and services, expected to increase about $400,000, and this is due to increased legal cost, costs related to the Oppenlander property litigation, but offset a little bit by some other savings in that department. And then, the City Management, Economic Development, and Contingency were decreased to balance the overages in the other departments. And then the last increase we have is a small one in the library, we're just increasing the appropriation $20,000 with an offset of contingency to fund the increase in salaries and benefit costs that were unexpected.
Thank you for that robust report related to the budget. Any, let's, we'll do the public hearing first, so I will open up a public hearing on Resolution 2025-07, the supplemental budget of the City of Westland, and take any comments. Are there any public comments on this item?
There are none.
Okay, there are no public comments, the record can reflect that. So, we held a public hearing, and I will close it. And we have met the requirements for adopting supplemental budget, correct?
Yes.
With regard to the notice and things like that?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you for that clarification. And I would entertain a motion, and we can have discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution 2025-07, adjusting the budget for the 2024-25 biennium by adopting this supplemental budget and revising appropriations and bonded debt property tax levy.
Second.
Okay, it's removed and seconded to adopt Resolution 2025-07, adjusting the budget for the 2024-25 biennium by adopting the supplemental budget and revising appropriations and bonded debt property tax levy. Any discussion? I will note that the, confirmed that the Scribner's error was in the resolution title, and we will have that corrected in the adopted version, and that's the intent of the council when we vote, to correct that error related to the biennium. Thank you, Councilor Bright, for catching that. I would expect nothing less from the person who used to preside over budgets in her former roles. Any discussion on the supplemental budget? Resolution 2025-07. Okay, seeing none, we can call the roll on that.
Councilor Groner?
Yes.
Councilor Bonnington?
Yes.
Councilor Bright?
Yes.
Council President Baumgartner?
Yes.
Mayor Bielostowski?
Yes, thank you. So, the supplemental budget is, is approved unanimously, and we've got two more items to go. The next item is Gen. Item 6A-C, Resolution 2025-08. Can you believe it? Another resolution. We're resolving a lot tonight, everybody. Abolishing the Parks and Recreation Fund, Public Safety Fund, Library Fund, and Planning Fund, and consolidating the balances into the general fund in accordance with ORS 294.353. And this was reflected in the current budget that was adopted, and then probably makes a lot of sense, I think. So, please, to give a staff report, why are we doing this?
So, we've talked quite a bit about this during the budget process, but we had four special revenue funds that were created a number of years ago, and we, those special revenue funds didn't need to necessarily be special revenue funds, because the, special revenue funds are generally for something that is restricted to a specific purpose. And while some of those funds, like the Parks and Rec Fund, has park maintenance fees, which is, which go towards parks' maintenance, we can track those separately by just showing that the Parks Fund spends more than it brings in. Same thing with the Library District levy. It made budgeting pretty challenging with these different funds that were all generally funded, and there was a lot of movements in and out from the general fund with subsidies from the general fund, but then also paying the general fund for indirect costs. And so, we discussed and decided to abolish these four funds and move them all into the general fund. And so, this is the resolution to do that. As the mayor mentioned, we have already basically done this with the adopted budget, so this is more just for the purposes of actually allowing us to do this, and... for the purposes of actually allowing us to do this and allowing the transfer to be made at the end of this fiscal year. Once we reconcile all the balances with the audit, we will move all those funds into the General Fund as of June 30, 2025.
Thank you for that. Well, I would entertain a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution 2025-08, abolishing the Parks and Recreation Fund, Public Safety Fund, Library Fund, and Planning Fund, and consolidating their balances into the General Fund in accordance with ORS 294.353.
I second the motion consolidating the funds.
Thank you for that. So, it has been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 2025-08, abolishing the Parks and Recreation Fund, Public Safety Fund, Library Fund, and Planning Fund, consolidating their balances into the General Fund in accordance with ORS 294.353. Any discussion? I was just looking at the statute. Interesting. So, and we have met the provision, so we can now do this. No discussion on the matter. So, this is an example of the city being more efficient with its budgeting and reducing confusion that comes when we have all those different funds when we go into the budget process. Now, it'll all be under the General Fund. So, we appreciate that. I think it makes it easier for everybody to track what's going on from the public to the city council.
I think after the next few months, it will be a lot easier. It's going to be a little bit challenging to do all the turnover of the accounts, but it, in the long run, it will definitely make things more efficient and more clear to understand.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments from council, please call the roll on the final resolution of the evening.
Counsel Bright?
Yes.
Counsel President Baumgartner?
Yes.
Counsel Groner?
Yes.
Counsel Bonington?
Yes.
Mayor Bielostowski?
Yes. So, Resolution 2025-08 passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody. And now, we will move on, on the agenda to the final item of requiring council action. This is for the community grants for fiscal year 2026. And do we have a staff report on that?
Yes.
Director Breithaupt, please.
Great. And this is another annual resolution that we do. In the adopted budget that we just adopted, we have 25,000 available each year of that budget for community grants. We generally go through the same process, but we are definitely going to be chatting about that, it sounds like, tonight about our process. And what that process is, is that we collect applications from all of the people who would like a grant. And this year, we had 24 requests, which totaled over $85,000 for the 25,000 available, which was quite large. So, with those, we send them out to the community members of the Budget Committee. And they go through and allocate how they would like to see it allocated. And then we go through a process of averaging and seeing if there's a common thread between everyone. So, if everyone picks, you know, the same amount, or four out of the five pick the same amount, then we usually start with those items and say, okay, why did we all pick this? We go through that meeting, and that meeting happened a few weeks back. And, and the Budget Committee comes up with, has a list of criteria that they're looking at. The criteria is attached to the agenda report. But priority is given to organizations that directly benefit Westland residents. No funding allocated for advertising or promotion, no funding allocated to neighborhood associations, which is a separate area of the budget. No funding for purely fundraising type of events or related to political advocacy. And they need to have a completed application with, which includes a report back from the prior year if they received funds from the prior year. And they need to let us know exactly what the funds are going to be used for. And so, with that, the Budget Committee went through it, and they selected what they think is a good allocation to recommend to council. Council can change these around if they would like, but this is what the Budget Committee has come up with. And so, there are a few on here that they decided not to fund. But there are quite a few that they did. So, if there's any questions, I'm happy to entertain them.
Counsel Groner, would you like to reiterate?
Yeah, I don't want to repeat what I said before, but it seems to me that if you're trying to allocate funds among a number of organizations, there ought to be some sort of scoring of these organizations according to some criteria. So, at least it's a little less subjective. And not that the loudest voice at the meeting gets their way.
Okay. So, more just on the criteria document, are you saying, like, adding scores more to that?
Yes.
Like, or adding actual scoring to that? Yeah, okay.
Dollar per population served, for example, by an organization. That would be one of the scoring criteria.
Okay.
If it's something that we want to take up as a council, we could have, you know, some discussion on the scoring criteria in the edit work session in the future.
Thank you.
Because you do raise a good point from the standpoint of having some objective criteria.
Just want to make it a little more justifiable about why we allocated what we did.
I'll definitely look into that and maybe touch base with you on some ideas about how we can make that
Thank you.
a little bit better.
That sounds great. Well, we, so we have a list of organizations and, for the council's consideration. I, and then the Budget Committee went through this process and made a recommendation. And now, it's on us to approve it or approve with modifications. And so, we can have a discussion now. Counsel President, please take it off.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just, looking over the list, I noticed that there's not too many, but there are some who it was not recommended to give any funding to. And I wondered if there's any process to, I know there's not staff time necessarily, but if there is an opportunity, maybe that we could communicate other options that potentially, I mean, that does sound like I'm assigning someone a task. So, I'm hesitating a little bit. But, for instance, I see here, one that jumped out at me was, where did it go? St. Vincent, Society of St. Vincent de Paul Resurrection Conference to purchase gift cards for Westland families during Thanksgiving. I wonder if they could work with, if they want to support an effort like that, I wonder if they could coordinate with the Food Pantry, kind of combine efforts since that's the same, similar
Yes.
cause. I, I don't know if something like that would help any of these others, if they have ways to partner or other opportunities for funding. I, I guess I just hate to give some of them nothing because all of them have, that I can see, have, have a good goal.
Correct. Yeah. And I believe the reason on some of these is that they didn't meet the criteria for one reason or another. And I think with the St. Vincent de Paul one, that might have been because it was a religious organization. I'm not 100% positive on that. But also, with the Safeway gift cards, our policies generally don't allow for us to purchase gift cards. And so, that might have been part of the discussion there. But yes, I think that it would be reasonable for us to reach out to them and maybe recommend that they work with other organizations that
Right.
can provide those services.
Or even, I have not seen the discussion as it happens. Is it maybe an opportunity for the committee to discuss, maybe they already do this. You know, here's the criteria by which you did not meet.
Uh-huh, yes.
And so, I, maybe that's, this is already happening.
We, we definitely, we send a letter each year, and it is a meeting that is posted. And so, we let them know if they would like to know why that there's a meeting online that they can go to. I think we generally link it in the, in the email or the letter. And then, if they have any questions, they can follow up with us on that. So, they can hopefully revise their application for the following year, or, you know, if they have any comments on that, then they can reach back out to us, and we can
Great.
see if there's another option.
Yeah. I would, I would love to have some kind of a, some kind of a back and forth just so we can get feedback on our process, too.
Yes, absolutely.
Because maybe there's improvements that we need to be making. So, thank you for that.
Thank you for that, Counsel President. Any comments or thoughts on the actual allocations? I hate to see some Westland organizations that are not, you know, that don't give, don't give funding.
I know it is a very challenging process for the Budget Committee members to select these. And they do use the criteria, and they are very thoughtful in their selections. And not only when they initially select it, but then they have a, a pretty robust discussion about why they chose what they chose. And so, they go through each one individually and say, this is why we think we should fund this. And they talk amongst themselves on what the criteria are, and if they're meeting them and whatnot. So, there is, there is quite a big discussion on it.
Thank you. Thank you. Counsel Bright, please.
I was on the Budget Committee one year and participated in this. It's not easy to go through because all of the applications certainly have some value. And it, then you have to sort through those limited funds. And it's, it's a tough job.
Thank you, Counsel President, please.
Oh, thank you. Yes, I just thought of one more thing. Maybe it would help for this decision we are making to see even just a, a small note about ones that somehow didn't meet, meet the criteria, just so that, or reason for not appointing any funds at all or recommending appointing any funds. That would help me.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Well, would somebody like to make a motion? Or any changes? Anybody have any changes to the, we'll start with that. Does anybody have any proposed changes to the grand allocation from the Budget Committee? Okay, seeing none, we can entertain a motion.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the Budget Committee community grant recommendations as illustrated in the attached.
Second.
Okay, it's removed and seconded to approve the Budget Committee community grant recommendations as illustrated in the attachment. Any discussion? Seeing none, we can call the roll for the final time. Busy night for you, Ms. Maleski.
Counsel President Baumgartner?
Yes.
Counsel Groner?
Yes.
Counsel Bonington?
Yes.
Counsel Bright?
Yes.
Mayor Bielostowski?
Yes. Thank you. And thanks to the Budget Committee for being the sounding board to get through that very difficult process. And although I may have wanted to change a few things around, you know, it's like you have to respect that vigorous process that they've put through to get to their allocations. And appreciate that.
I really appreciate their contribution to that. It is, I know it is a lot of work, a lot of reading through the applications and then having the meeting about it. So, it is, it is tough decision, like Counsel Bright said.
And thank you, Ms. Breithaupt.
Absolutely.
Yes, thank you to our staff, Ms. Breithaupt, Mr. Williams, everybody who worked on the budget documents and the community grants and got us to the point of adoption. And I know it's a several months-long, if not year-long process. And I appreciated all that. And especially your budget messages and the tidings. You're doing your best to inform the community as well. So, with that, city manager report. Welcome back from Ashland.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Appreciate that. Lauren may have had 12 resolutions tonight, but she's just looking ahead at the future council calendar, and she's not back in front of you until October. So, we'll see.
Maybe right-of-way code.
We'll see. Maybe right-of-way code, yeah. We have three meetings scheduled for July, two work sessions, and a business meeting. The topic, sole topic right now for the July 7th afternoon work session is that long-range city budget needs and opportunities question that you all were just talking about. So, we'll dive right back into this with a discussion of things that we weren't able to fund, things that we think the community wants, things that the organization needs, things that our buildings need. And how are we going to do, pay attention to those while also carefully guarding every line item, as I already promised that we will do, in order to address future deficits. So, challenging situation. I guess Lauren will probably be back for that one if she's around. So, I, I misled you. Lauren's going to be here all the time in the next few months. How about that? July 14th, business meeting. We have a couple of, we have a discussion of Division 43 again, and a couple of consent items, I think. We're still working on that agenda, I would say. And so, and the second work session in July is very light right now. And then only one meeting in August before you take your recess. So, coming, the summer months, we'll have some interesting content, but August will give you a little time off. I was just looking ahead on the city's calendar. I noticed that the Vision 43 working group is having a sixth meeting this week. And they, that group has been working hard, and I know Chris has been bringing them some, some great content. So, I appreciate their work. Again, we have that Opal Lee Walk for Freedom discussion on Wednesday, sorry, Thursday evening. Oh, and I think the 43 is Thursday evening, Thursday afternoon, actually. And then, the city's closed on Friday, and again, next Friday for Independence Day. So, I think that's all I have for you. We are still paying attention to all the to-dos. We've got a couple tonight, future discussion of the community grants process. And we'll, we are still catching those and trying to fit them into council agendas to make sure we're accomplishing all the things that you talk about in these meetings. So, with that, I think that's all I have for this evening. Kaylee, anything to add? No?
Thank you for, thank you for that. Anything from the council? We have a special birthday announcement. It is Council President's birthday today. And we're going to have, after the meeting, have a little bit of cake and celebrate with her. Thank you for being here on your birthday, serving the community.
I know she never really actually said this, but I know attributed to Marie Antoinette, let them eat cake.
Thank you. And so, with that, we are adjourned for the evening. Thank you, everybody. Productive meeting, and we'll be back next month. Adjourned. Productive meeting, and we'll be back next month. Adjourned.